Good evening. Welcome to the Metatchen Board of Education meeting. Do I need to speak louder? Oh my, good evening. Welcome to the Metatchen Board of Education meeting for January 28th, 2025. If we could stand for the flag salute, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, made visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Notice of the meeting, please, Ms. Aliyevich.
I hereby make the statement to indicate compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known as Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of New Jersey, 1975, which became effective 90 days after enactment, January 19th, 1976. Notice that this meeting was given by providing the location, time, and date of this meeting, and posting the same on the front door of the Board of Education offices, by delivering copies to the Borough Hall and the Metatchen Public Library, the Home News and Tribune, the Star Ledger, and by filing a copy by the Borough Clerk as prescribed by this law.
Thank you so much. Rule call, please.
Mr. Bott.
Here.
Ms. Cheatham.
Here.
Mr. Dersflinger.
Here.
Mr. Glassberg.
Here.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Here.
Ms. Colleen. She has advised us she won't be here today.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lifton.
Here.
Ms. Thressa said she was not going to be here today. Dr. Spigner.
Here.
Mr. Suss.
Here.
Thank you so much, Ms. Aliyevich. Next, we turn to Dr. Caputo to tell us a little bit about some fun stuff we've got going on today.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, first up today, it's musical season, so the Edgar School Music Drama Club proudly presents Finding Nemo Jr., a musical adaptation of the 2003 Pixar film. We invite everyone in the audience to join us here at Metatchen High School Friday and Saturday at 7:00 and Sunday, February 2nd, at 2:00. Marlin, an anxious and overprotective clownfish, lives in the Great Barrier Reef with his kid Nemo, who longs to explore the world beyond their anemone home. When Nemo is captured and taken to Sydney, Marlin faces his fears and sets off on an epic adventure across the ocean. With the help of lovable characters such as the optimistic Dory, laid-back sea turtle Crush, and the supportive tank gang, Marlin and Nemo both overcome challenges on their journey to find each other and themselves. Tonight, Karen Blevins and Emery Gordon will preview our show with a performance of Just Keep Swimming.
Wonderful. (applause)
Hey, Mr. Grumpy Gills, life's full of little spills. Don't throw your fins up in disgust. Oh, what's there so floating there, not going anywhere? Swish your tail and dive on in, trust. That if you just keep swimming, just keep swimming, life isn't all that cruel. Just keep swimming, just keep swimming, what do we do?
We swim.
Right? La 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 la.
Singing.
La 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 la.
Singing, please.
La 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 la.
All those songs could be stuck in my head.
Look, there's a shiny thing, hey, that looks interesting.
We're trying to stay on task.
It says P Sherman 42, Wallaby Way, Sydney.
Dory, you can read? Wait, that's the mask.
Yay, I can read!
Yeah, but now what? We don't know how to get there.
We follow our gut!
But...
Just keep swimming, just keep swimming, everything will be okay, see? Just keep swimming, swish your tail and try enough to find your way. Oh, sometimes things look bad, then the moment is gone, and what do we do? We just keep swimming on. To P Sherman 42, Wallaby Way, Sydney. I remember what he said! P Sherman 42, Wallaby Way, Sydney.
Wait, where is it?
I don't know, who cares? I remember again! P Sherman 42, Wallaby Way, Sydney. P Sherman 42, Wallaby Way, Sydney. P Sherman 42, Wallaby Way, Sydney.
Stop!
Awesome.
(applause) Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much for that wonderful preview, Friday and Saturday evening, as well as Sunday afternoon. Check 'em out. What a wonderful performance.
Thank you, Karen and Emery. Appreciate it.
They're like, we're going. We've got more rehearsals to get to. All right. Dr. Caputo, we also have more excitement.
We do. We're excited. Each year, we participate in the State Teacher of the Year Program, the Governor's Educator of the Year, Ed Services Professionals of the Year. And around this time of the year, midwinter, we think it's a great time for both the board to see those winners and to get a chance, those winners to come out and be recognized in front of the community by the Board of Ed. So, these are some of our best educators, a rigorous process at the schools, and we're really happy to present them to you tonight. So, on the agenda, I'll take you through in the order. So, from Moss School, we have our Governor's Educator of the Year, Jennifer Karpahn.
Thank you so much. I want to thank my amazing coworkers and my wonderful new principal, Jen Asperkolos. Moss is a very special place, and we are really lucky over there. I always tell people I have the best job in the world, and I really do. I am very honored to be able to teach in the same esteemed district that I grew up as a student in. And what it means to be a Bulldog is very important to me, and I try to pass that along to my students every day. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for all you do for our littlest Bulldogs.
Our Ed Services Professional of the Year from Moss School is Pam Malone.
Thank you. I feel honored to receive this award. I love working at Moss School. I love our new principal, Jennifer.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Malone.
Our Campbell School Governor's Educator of the Year is Jennifer Pasquale.
Good evening. It is an honor to stand here tonight, recognized as Campbell School's Teacher of the Year, and I have a few people I'd like to thank. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, our administration, and our community for your ongoing support of Metatchen teachers. It's thanks to your commitment to the growth of teachers that I've been able to continue my own education and professional development, which has enabled me to make the classroom a more enriching environment for my students. To my fellow teachers, especially the fourth grade team, thank you for always being willing to collaborate and work together to make Campbell School a great place for our students to learn. To my students, the reason I'm standing here tonight, thank you for challenging me. You inspire me and you make me excited to come to work every single day. Their curiosity, energy, and seeing all of their growth makes teaching the most rewarding job in the world, in my opinion. My students are the future, and I'm so privileged to be a small part of their journey. And thank you for teaching me just as much as I hope I've taught you. To my family, both Canadian and American, who are my biggest cheerleaders, I want to say thank you. Your unwavering love and support has been my constant throughout my career. Thank you for your patience, your understanding, and for always believing in me, even when I doubted myself. This award is a true testament to their sacrifices and their unwavering support and belief in me. And lastly, to my co-teacher of the past seven years and last year's Teacher of the Year, Lindsay Omar. Her dedication to students at Campbell has always been inspiring to me. While our working relationship has changed now that we're no longer co-teaching, I continue to value her insights, her support, and her friendship. This award would not be possible without our partnership, and thank you to Lindsay for being an amazing colleague and especially friend. This recognition is a tremendous honor, and I'm deeply humbled and grateful. I'm surrounded by so many amazing people who make me a better teacher, and I'm so thankful to be a part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your beautiful words. I love the baton passing of Governor's Educator of the Year. I love that. Great work.
Our Campbell School Ed Services Professional of the Year is Amy Bindra.
Thank you so much. I love being part of the Metatchen community and especially the Campbell School community. I feel incredibly supported by the staff that I work with, the teachers I work with, and I love working with the students and their families. I feel like being part of this school community and this overall community has given me a lot of freedom to come with ideas and do a whole wraparound approach with a lot of students and give them support in the best ways possible. So, I really love being part of Metatchen.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bindra, for all you do for our students.
Our Edgar School Governor's Educator of the Year is Caroline Ford.
In true Caroline Ford fashion, I forgot my paper on my dining room table, so I will be reading from my phone. Before I start, I'd like to say that my incredible, brilliant, kind students insisted that I speak for a full 10 minutes. I won't be doing that. But I would like to take a quick moment to share a few thoughts. Reflecting on my time as an educator in this district, one thing stands out: the magic that happens when students take risks. Watching a student feel safe enough to share a wild answer or brave enough to write their first draft, no matter how messy, that's where real learning begins. And honestly, I'm constantly inspired by their courage. That same spirit of risk-taking is possible for me, too, thanks to the unwavering support of administrators, board members like yourself and yourselves, I teach English, and colleagues. Their encouragement gives me the freedom and confidence to try new strategies, engage in meaningful and sometimes challenging conversations about the world, and truly see students as individuals with unique stories and unique potential. In fact, risk-taking is what got me my job here in the first place. Nine years ago, the district took a chance and hired a recent college grad with no classroom experience about outside of student teaching just three days before the school year started. Thanks for that, Dr. Caputo. Of course, none of this would be possible without the amazing team that surrounds me. Every day, I'm inspired by colleagues who encourage me to take on new lessons, experiment with new tools and new strategies, and push the boundaries of what's truly possible in the classroom. Teaching often feels like juggling a million things at once, and my colleagues are the extra hand that helps me keep everything in the air and remind me to laugh through the chaos. So, here's to learning from mistakes, cheering each other on, and never forgetting how fun and meaningful this work is at the end of the day. Thank you for the honor.
Thank you. I think you're full and served just fine. You're full and served just fine.
Our Edgar Ed Services Professional of the Year is Mary Jo Pullman.
I gotta take the long this way.
All good.
Good evening to the board, my colleagues, and everyone here. I have been a para for 22 years. This is not something I ever thought I would do, but it has been one of the best experiences of my life. I am grateful for all of the people I work with who are exceptional, and I am also glad for the children I have met over the years. Not only have I helped them, but they have helped me. I'd like to end with a quote, something that I try to convey to my students: "Trust yourself. You probably know more than you think you do. Trust that you can learn anything." Melinda French Gates. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. What a great quote.
From Metatchen High School, our Governor's Educator of the Year is Anne Leghorn Arapalo.
Hello. Okay. Thank you for inviting us to attend the meeting tonight. I was shocked but honored to receive this year's Governor's Educator of the Year Award at MHS. The real honor came in knowing that it was my peers who nominated me, recognizing the work I do alongside them for our students. So, while I am receiving the award for my work, it isn't done in a silo. I am lucky enough to work collaboratively with some of the best in the business. My work for RTI at both MHS and Edgar rarely, if ever, takes place alone. I came to this district four years ago. I met a lot of incredible teachers, all working towards the same goal: to support students in both reading and writing. They welcomed me into their classrooms. They allowed me to bring a different perspective on how to do flexible groupings, use new strategies. They're really always open when I say, "You actually have this, like, new thing we could do instead of that thing?" And they always are responding to students' needs alongside of me. So, while the work we do isn't easy, the best part is that we don't have to do it alone. Sometimes in teaching, it can feel like you're on an island once you close your door, and it can particularly feel that way for reading specialists or other singular areas. But I'm lucky enough that I never feel like that here. There's always other teachers and administrators there for me to work with, teams for me to be a part of, and folks asking for my thoughts on something. It reminds me that we do this together for a common purpose: the students. So, congratulations to all the other educators of the year as well. I personally taught alongside Ms. Ford, and I completed the two-year OG program with Ms. Pasquale, and they're both incredible educators who deserve their own accolades. So, I appreciate being in a community where I can be myself and be fully accepted in the classroom and in the school. So, I appreciate this opportunity for my Oscars moment, and I look forward to everything that comes next. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your innovation.
And, Madam President, the Metatchen High School Ed Services Professional of the Year is not able to be here tonight, but we still want to recognize her, and that's Mrs. Christina Thies.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all of you. We really appreciate all of you being here and the dedication that you pour into all of our students every single day. Thank you again so very much.
Just wanted to say, those are some of the most thoughtful speeches that I think that we've heard in many years or in my time on the board. So, thank you for the time that you put into that, and the words mean a lot for us to hear and for the public to hear. Thank you.
We got a good group, Mr. Dersflinger. Really good group.
All right. At this time, the meeting is open to the public. We understand if you're not going to stay and, you know, just absorb all of our things, but indeed, public, if you have any questions, comments. And we will not be offended if you sneak away quietly right now. We understand. You've got to get your rest before tomorrow's excitement. Thank you again for coming out, and congratulations. All right. Dr. Caputo, do we have any presentations tonight?
No presentations tonight, Madam President.
All right. No presents either? All right. At this time, we move to reports. At this time, as President, I do not have a particular report, so we turn to you again, Dr. Caputo. Any superintendent's report tonight?
No report for me tonight.
All right. Wonderful. Moving to our committee reports. The order is all off now.
Go down the line, maybe.
Go down the line. All right. Who has met? Mr. Glassberg, would you like to kick us off?
Sure. Yeah, we, the Construction Committee has not met, but we are meeting publicly. Our meeting is on February 24th in the Metatchen High School Library at 7:00 PM. Everybody's welcome to come and watch our committee at work and hear from some of our professionals. We'll be meeting privately prior to then. Just some things: remember to go to metatchenschools.org, click on the referendum updates. You'll see some updated notes there, two-week look ahead at the project. There are some newer photos that have been added there. It also has all of our public meeting dates that are going to be kept throughout this calendar year. And we should have some more important updates soon regarding next year's schedule and things like that. So, look forward to that soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glassberg. Any questions for Mr. Glassberg?
Do all the reports first.
Sorry?
Do all the reports first.
Oh, sorry. Just kidding. Sure. No report? Go ahead.
I do have a report. Curriculum met on Tuesday, January 21st. The first topic that we discussed, we were provided with an update on our CUSAC evaluation. The onsite visit is scheduled for February 12th, so we discussed some of those nuances and details there. We then discussed some new curriculum and texts that Dr. Caputo and Dr. Herzog are seeking our approval. We revised the K-12 physical education and health curriculum, so we reviewed that. The updates emphasize aligning the CUSAC requirements of us and also highlighting interdisciplinary connections. We are utilizing the district's updated textbook recommendation form for our first recommendation of a sixth-grade LA text called Front Desk. We then discussed some new mid-year hires that will require mentorship, so we looked and reviewed those recommendations. And then, in line with our work on AI, we are working on implementing a new AI policy, an AI plan. A lot of work around this going on, including mini-professional development that's being prerecorded, supports for staff and parents. We're also looking to compensate staff to begin working on these goals. So, a lot of really, really important AI work happening right now in curriculum. And our next meeting will be February 18th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dersflinger. And I want to kind of start over, over here on the end, because while some of our committees have not met as yet, because we've just reorganized, I want to make sure that each of the committee chairs gets a chance to put it out there in the public either when we will meet next. So, if you could each share when your committees will be meeting, so that we can then move from the committee reports.
Sure. The Equity Committee has not met. We are just reassessing the next step for the committee in partnership with the administration and in service of the community, given our current context, and we will be meeting February 18th.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. And, policy?
Policy has not met. We'll be meeting on February 18th.
Thank you. And, Mr. Suss, finance?
Finance has not met. We will be meeting on February 3rd, same time as construction, and Ms. Colleen's not here.
Extracurricular. Wonderful. Thank you so much. And since Ms. Thressa's not here, we won't have a student board member report. So, at this time, is there any old business?
Any questions?
Oh, sorry. Were there any questions? Got to start making notes on these things. So, any old business? Any new business? All right. Wonderful. And now, I'm moving to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting. January 7th, Special Business Meeting, January 7th, 2025, Special Business Meeting Two, January 7th, 2025, Board Meeting. Rule call, please? No second? Okay. I will get it one day, I promise.
You will. Absolutely.
Is there a second? Mr. Dersflinger.
Got to get your groove on, Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Mr. Dersflinger.
I got to write it down.
Comments or questions?
Any comments or questions on the Special Business Meeting One, Two, or Board Meeting? All right. Now, rule call. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Dersflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you so much, Ms. Aliyevich. All right. Meeting is open to the public at this time on any topic. Seeing none at this time, we move to the recommendation of the superintendents of schools. At this time, sorry. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent of schools. If the superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with the administration and the superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it's presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. So, we move to personnel items A, 1 through, I'm going to check this physical copy to make sure, A 1 through 20. Is there a second? Mr. Glassberg?
Left a second. Now, what? Questions or comments?
Questions or comments?
Comments, yeah. If I could, just because Ms. Saratelli's on this list as retiring, and for anyone that's not aware, she's worked in the district for 20 years. She's a tremendous resource to students. She serves tirelessly and selflessly, so it's going to be a sad day when she leaves the district for many, many special needs parents. So, I just want to take time to recognize her, because she's so much more than a lion on the sheet.
Absolutely.
She's a wonderful asset to the district.
Absolutely.
We will miss her dearly.
Thank you, Ms. Cheatham. Dr. Caputo also is going to interrupt me, but you beat him to the punch. He's got some stuff, too, but we love Mrs. Saratelli, so we are happy to pour on the appreciation.
Yes. I'll do it after you vote, just to make sure. Except for retirement.
Okay. All right. So, now, I ask for a second. No, no. You did second. Ask for a rule call. Listen, y'all. Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Dersflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes!
Wonderful. Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Dr. Johnson Marcus, if you, a second before we move on from personnel.
Absolutely.
As alluded to, and Ms. Cheatham said so well, since 2005, Mrs. Saratelli has been a part of very fabric of Metatchen's quilt. As she closes this chapter and begins this exciting journey of retirement, we want to take a moment to congratulate her and express our sincere appreciation for all she's done over the years. Her dedication, hard work, care, concern, and passion have made a lasting impact on the many students, colleagues, and families she's worked with. Throughout her career, she's been a collaborative partner and has served on multiple building and district-level committees, and has also taken on leadership opportunities, such as serving in capacity of president of the Power Professionals Association. We will miss her, and best of luck to her in her next chapter.
Thank you so much, Dr. Caputo, and I will echo all of those beautiful sense events. Mrs. Saratelli, you are an institution here, and you will be missed indeed. And now, I move to Mr. Suss for finance.
I'd like to move items B1 through B7. Those listed on the agenda?
Wonderful. Is there a second? Mr. Lifton? Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Rule call, please, Ms. Aliyevich.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Dersflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Dr. Johnson Marcus? If I may, I should have said it during the comments. In the number seven on the finance were items that were part of the referendum that are being paid for just in a different manner, but using funds from the referendum. Is that right? Yep. Funds from the referendum. So, I just wanted to point that out as a separate item there. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Glassberg, as always, for keeping us on top of our toes with respect to construction and our spending. All right. Next up, we have Dr. Spigner with policy.
I'd like to move items 1 through 5 on the agenda, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Is there a second? Mr. Suss? Any questions or comments about the policy items? Mr. Suss?
Yeah, a question for Mr. Harvier. I think one of the items is a trip for the jazz band to South Jersey?
That's incorrect. Policy, you're ahead of the curve there, Mr. Suss.
Oh, I got ahead of it.
Pulled strain.
Yeah. Sorry.
All right, so we're holding that question slash comment.
I withdraw the question.
And are there other questions slash comments for policy items 1 through 5? No?
Well, sure, I'll make a comment.
You want to make a comment?
I do.
Also.
This one on policy.
Go for it.
Actually, Dr. Herzog sent out the AI plan.
Yes.
Which was mentioned by Mr. Dürflinger. I encourage everyone to take a look at it. It's very, very good.
Yes.
I think the policy, I think we're voting on both the policy and, we're voting on the policy, the policy is vague. Most of the details is in the plan, and the plan is quite detailed.
Indeed, it is.
So do take a look at that.
Well done. Thank you. Excellent comment.
Excellent comment, Mr. Suss.
We're affirming your comment. We said, I said excellent, and you said thank you. So we are all on board.
Madam President, just as we're talking about, Ms. Cheatham, see, because there's some conversation around some of the items in four, should we still move that forward?
The items in number four were all discussed by the board last executive session, and they're voting on them today.
It's, they're different items from the closed session item.
Correct.
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 But thank you for raising it and making sure we were good. I appreciate that. Ms. Aliyevich is waiting with bated breath for this rule call. I think we might be at rule call. Are we?
Yeah, go ahead.
Y'all, for sure, for sure.
Can I make a comment?
No, yeah, of course.
I'm just letting you guys know the 25, 26 school calendar. Have it in front of you. So that's what you're approving. Just have it in front of you. That's it.
Thank you. Confirming, y'all are good?
Yeah. Do we want to mention what's different from, this was shown at the last meeting? I think there's only one slight change, Dr. Caputo?
There was, calendar was never shown. It was discussed.
It was discussed, sorry.
Right, so we didn't have a vote on it yet. But the change you alluded to was just the placement of the fifth in-service day. Normally, we have four in-service days. Next year, because of a trade-off, there are five in-service days, and it was originally recommended for the Friday in February, it was moved back to a Friday in January, connected to the MLK Junior Day Off on that Monday in January.
Any other comments on the policy items 1 through 5? Fantastic. Thank you so much. Ms. Aliyevich, roll call, please.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Abstain.
Mr. Dürflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Now I turn to Ms. Dürflinger for her curriculum.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move items D1 through 9, as listed on the agenda, please.
Wonderful. May I have a second, please? Mr. Lifton, any questions or comments about the curriculum items? He did raise his hand first, Mr. Suss. You have the floor.
Sure. Question on the trip for the jazz band.
No, I'm sorry. That's old business now. I've been waiting to make that joke for 18 years.
I see that. You were just like, let's go.
It's a Marx Brothers joke. I highly recommend duck soup, which is what it's supposed.
Well, it's an open, public session. I can go up there and ask about it. Anyway, I mean, the cost seems pretty expensive for the bus, and I also, that's included for the cost for a truck. Does the jazz band, I understand the marching band needing a truck, and I know we tried to give an old bus to the marching band, but they couldn't use it. Do they really need a bus and a truck? Can we get any way to cheapen that? I mean, it's over $1,000, and you throw the truck in, that's going to be like $2,000.
We can do a little more due diligence and make sure they need the truck. But as of today, our conversation's up to this point, they do need the truck, yes. You can't, you can't put the equipment, it'd be a safety issue.
This isn't the marching band.
I understand.
Yeah.
The jazz band still has some equipment. It'd be a safety issue if you put that stuff on the, on the bus.
Does that answer your question? Yes.
And we'll look into it first. We'll look into it again.
Thank you, Mr. Harvier. Mr. Lifton, did you actually have a comment, or you just wanted to get that joke in there?
No, I just wanted to.
All right, just making sure.
Give it to Mr. Suss.
I want to make sure you have your time, if you needed some.
I just, I'm just not sure. So did we, are we deferring that item based on, or are we voting on it, and Ms. Harv is going to get my information? You know, the bus, we can wait. I mean, the truck, we can wait. I think we should approve the bus, though. Your concern is the truck, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, we can wait. The bus, we have to lock in the bus.
Yeah, and there's no cost listed by the truck anyway.
Correct. The truck would be the rental cost.
Okay.
And our driver.
But aren't, Madam President, are we, would we potentially not approve it? Aren't we just going to approve it anyway, and they're going to do the best that they can to?
I asked the question. That's fine with me. Just do the best that we can.
Is that okay? Yeah, they're going to, they're going to see whether we really need it.
I believe that Mr. Harv.
But if they decide that they need it for space and safety reasons, we're going to approve it anyway, so why don't we just approve it?
Yes, I believe that is the consensus.
Okay, so we don't need to wait on either part.
Because Mr. Harv will look into getting the best deal we can.
Right.
Keeping safety in mind.
Right.
Absolutely. Wonderful. Any other comments on the curriculum items in particular? Nope. All right. So, we're at comments. So now we're at rule call.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Dürflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Aliyevich. This time, the meeting is open to the public on any topic. Seeing none, we move to announcements. And now, I believe that the tradition has been that the newest member of the board does the announcements. Mrs. Cheatham, I'm sure Mr. Bott was happy to pass the torch to you. So the floor is yours, Mrs. Cheatham.
Okay, thank you. We don't have too much, but with C at the Campbell Elementary School and the Moss PTO, right now, they're in the middle of Spring X signups. They still need to fill five more classrooms, so anyone that's interested can reach out to the PTO, or they can refer to Dr. C's recent Friday 3 for more details. There also is the Read-a-Thon fundraiser that's off to an amazing start. They are well over, I shouldn't say well over, but over $10,000 in donations. So it's really gone strong. And then finally, they are also forming a staff appreciation committee. With that, I'm going to move over to Edgar Middle School. Right now, they are working towards the Father-Son Top Golf Event that's going to occur on March 25th. Be on the lookout for registration. Details coming soon. They're also looking for gently-used middle-school-appropriate books to expand the classroom libraries. Again, you can find out more information from the Bulldog Brief, where to drop off any of those gently-used items. And then they're also working towards the Mother-Daughter Brunch Event that's going to be occurring in early February. And there, just heading over to Matouchin High School. So the Matouchin High School Environmental Club hosted a coat drive from December 9th to January 9th, collecting two large bags of 17 gently-used winter coats for donations to Jersey Cares. The coats will be distributed to those in need, helping to keep the community warm while reducing landfill waste and conserving resources. Additionally, the Environmental Club is running an ongoing collection of used markers, pens, and single-use batteries for recycling through the end of the year. And these collections do contribute points towards the Sustainable Jersey for Schools certification, so other schools are encouraged to participate as well. But good work going on at Matouchin High School. And that is all that I have.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Mrs. Cheatham. Got the first one done nicely. Thank you. All right. At this time, I believe I'm supposed to then, is that right? Yeah, we're not going into executive. Okay, good, good. Just making sure. All right, folks. And I also want to be mindful that it is Lunar New Year this Wednesday, so I wish all of our families who are celebrating a wonderful and happy festive season, celebrating Lunar New Year, and also it's Black History Month, starting on Saturday. So go learn some things, y'all. With that, we adjourn for the evening. Wait, I got to make a move.
Make a motion.
I got to move. I got to make a motion. I move that we, I motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Is there a second? Mr. Dürflinger, all in favor? Have a wonderful night, folks.
Nice job.
Thank you for bearing this in.
Great job for the meeting. Good job.
I will write this down next time.